Please come to order. Tonight is the October 23 voting meeting. Please rise, salute the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ocasoneal, roll call please.
Mrs. White. Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Martino.
Here.
Mr. Ocasoneal here. Mr. Potts.
Here.
Mr. Rathgab.
Here.
Mr. Scotts.
Here.
Ms. Tardowski.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here. Okay, the procedures for public participation are printed inside the jacket of your agenda. If you haven't already done so, please make sure you sign in at the back of the room. The attachments are also back there for the items that have attachments on the agenda. If you would like to view them, please do not take them with you. Also, if you wish to address the board at the appropriate time, you approach the podium. Again, state your name and record, uh, name and address for the record and sign in there as well. And you'll be given four, uh, three minutes to address the board. Under announcements, I have two edits. Fifteen C is actually curriculum and instruction committee, not development committee. And I also would like to add D, district attendance spreadsheet. Does any board members have any edits to the agenda? Seeing none. There will be an exec, there was an executive session that preceded this meeting. There will be another executive session following this meeting for the continuing discussions of negotiations and personnel issues. Are there any presentations by the public on items listed on the agenda? Seeing none. Move to seven, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion for the same items seven A, seven B, and number eight, personal consent items eight.
Second. Some motion by Ms. Tardowski, second by Mr. Rathgab for seven and eight on the agenda. Discussion?
Uh, well, I think one, uh, note for the record, I'll find approving everything on this, uh, who had discussion last time, I'm assuming that there's going to be more people going to the trip to New York, uh, than, uh...
More chaperones, huh?
Item K.
Yes.
By something of improvement, that is, that it will be additional chaperones.
Yes.
I have a question for Mr. Bass on, on item T. Am I reading this correctly, that the new and improved microphone system costs less than this microphone system?
Yeah, yeah, you're reading exactly right. Basically because it's wired.
Because it what?
It's wired.
Wireless. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? It's consent agenda, so it's only due to affirmative.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Moving to number nine, programs. Do I have a motion for either of those, A or B?
Make a motion for nine, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Tardowski, second by Mr. Potts. Discussion? Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. As we move into ten, I would ask to note that exclude ten A, one A. Do I have a motion for any items in ten?
Make a motion for, uh, ten A excluding one A. Much smaller.
Motion by Mr. Rathgab, second by Mr. Potts. Discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Do I have a motion for ten A, one A?
I shall now make a motion for ten A, one A.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rathgab, second by Ms. Tardowski. Discussion? Mr. Ocasoneal, roll call vote please.
Uh, Mr. Ocasoneal, I am abstaining since my wife is named in this motion. Uh, Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Rathgab.
Yes.
Mr. Scotts.
Yes.
Ms. Tardowski.
Yes.
Mr. Martino.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, moving to eleven, finance. Do I have any, got a motion for any of all these under to eleven?
Make a motion for item A through B.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rathgab, second by Ms. Tardowski. Board comment?
Question for Mr. Rathgab. Question for Ms. Tardowski. Had, at the committee of the whole, this item D on recording gates, wasn't, wasn't that cost for the gates themselves, not just the locking equipment?
Um, that was just for locking equipment through the gates we have. There won't be additional gates that will be needed, but we don't have those closed yet. So it was just for the existing gates to, um, retrofit the existing gates we have.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah. The committee of the whole was a type, type, type of online part on that, you don't know the...
Okay. I knew there was going to be, there was more gates, but I'm not sure what it said, and if I explain to Owen, I'm sorry, but I know it was just for locking.
No, I just thought that's what I understood. That's why...
Well, we'd all just want to pick off some of these little items that keep showing up on the, on Dane's report and Mr. McKnight's report, you know, for the segregate the high school or to separate the, uh, AMETI kids from the, uh, from the administration there. So at least we're making some progress there. Any other board discussion? Mr. Ocasoneal, roll call please.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Rathgab.
Yes.
Mr. Scotts.
Yes.
Ms. Tardowski.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Martino.
Yes.
Mr. Ocasoneal, yes? Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Moving to twelve, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tardowski, second by Mr. Rathgab. Board discussion?
I have a comment, a question, and a comment, as I stated before, I think Mr. Harris deserves a raise in the first year of the contract, not just the last two. That's just a personal opinion. My question is, can we talk about making this contract coincide with the school year calendar?
I can address that, one second. May I?
Uh, there was discussion regarding that, however, pursuant to the school code, you can only extend a superintendent's contract up to five years. Uh, the original term was three years. The intent of the board was to extend Mr. Harris's commission and contract for an additional full two years. So in order to do that, it would have to run from November one to October thirty-one to get those four years in. And that's, I just wanted to note that the board does have the authority at any time during the term of an, uh, existing superintendent to extend his term up to the statutory maximum of five years. Mr. Harris's original term was three years. That expires next October thirty-one. Uh, as the board is authorized to enter into this extension. With respect to the salary issue, the, the motion tonight and the contract only stipulate as to his salary starting next, it would be October of nineteen. Um, the board in the existing contract, so his salary for this October seventeen through, or November one seventeen through, uh, October, or October thirty-one eighteen, would be controlled by the existing provisions, which allow a, a, um, increase in salary at board discretion. So you would still have that discretion.
Any other board discussion? Mr. Ocasoneal, roll call please.
Yes.
Mr. Scotts.
Yes.
Ms. Tardowski.
Yes.
Mr. Martino.
Yes.
Mr. Ocasoneal, yes? Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Do I have a motion for thirteen?
Uh, again, um, this is just to approve the, uh, contract for Mr. Harris for the extended term. Uh, essentially, the extended current term is November of, uh, twenty, November one twenty eighteen through October thirty-one twenty twenty. During the first year of that extension, Mr. Harris's salary would be increased to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. Uh, the remaining terms are essentially the same as, uh, his existing contract with the following exceptions. Um, the sellback of vacation days was increased from five vacation days to ten vacation days. The, uh, limit on a discretionary bonus of twenty-five hundred dollars was removed from the contract, and the severance provided in, uh, the event that Mr. Harris's, uh, employment was terminated by the board without cause during that extended term would be equal to one-third of his remaining salary for the minimum severance of six months. Um, there was also a provision, so you know, regarding tuition reimbursement. Tuition reimbursement will be, uh, all, uh, the other salary and benefits are equivalent to those, uh, provided to the district administrators pursuant to the administrators' compensation plan, including tuition reimbursement, with the exception that, under the administrators' compensation plan, uh, there's a payback if an administrator leaves within, within a certain period of time, uh, after receiving the tuition reimbursement. The exception I put in here, because it's only a two-year contract, was if, if he leaves because his contract term expires, he's not going to have to repay that tuition. Otherwise, um, the contract is consistent with the existing terms and conditions and the, uh, benefits provided to the district's administrators.
Is that it?
Second.
Still looking for a motion from the second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, second by Mr. Rathgab. Any board discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Ocasoneal, roll call please.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Tardowski.
Yes.
Mr. Martino.
Yes.
Mr. Ocasoneal, yes? Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Rathgab.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, moving to fourteen, old business. We had discussed this a while ago, to save Mr. McKnight from having to continually try to explain it. I thought it would be helpful if we would, um, take part in a board development. This would be open to the public. Um, I discussed this with Ms. Hicks as well, if they, someone in their group would like to attend. I encourage new board members, um, um, that they could attend this as well, to understand a lot of the discussions we've been having as far as how the, um, study halls occur in, in high school, um, and to get a little bit more information, in-depth information on how that scheduling, uh, actually takes place. So, um, very happy to hear Mr. McKnight, um, was able to accommodate us on the eighth of November at six-thirty at the high school. I think we'll have, put something on the website once we know where the venue is. Um, but I just want to make sure everyone is aware of that. I'm going to be reaching out to those, um, folks that are, uh, running unopposed in their, in their district for the seat on the school board to make sure that they understand that they're welcome to join us that night. Any discussion on that? Okay. Um, fifteen, new business. Do I have, uh, any motions there? This is as amended, C has been amended. Do I have any motions for those, A through C? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Kurtz, let me pick them individually. Um, Mr. Kurtz's resignation. Um, do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Connor Kurtz?
Make a motion for fifteen, aye.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rathgab, second by Mr. Potts. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, now, we have, uh, none of, we have to appoint someone to fill the, um, remaining time of Mr. Kurtz, which will end, um, on twenty, November twenty nineteen. I think Mr. Subers has a brief word you want to say before that?
Well, uh, the only thing I'd like to say, that if, um, there is a motion to approve, approve an existing school board member whose term may be expiring this November, then, uh, that school board member should submit, uh, his or her resignation, and it would have to be from Mr. Kurtz's, uh, region. Um, that school board member should submit their resignation, tender their resignation to the board, can be contingent upon the reappointment to this position, but, um, they should tender their resignation prior to this board motion. And then I would suggest that, uh, motion, the motion set forth in fifteen B be amended to approve, uh, or accept the resignation of that particular board member and approve their appointment to fill Mr. Kurtz's term. Again, this only applies if the board is intending to fill this position with an existing board member from, uh, uh, the, uh, I think, wait, correct? This is reg, one?
No, this is reg, one.
Oh, reg, one, I'm sorry. So if it's an existing board member whose term is about to expire, uh, this December, um, then we need to follow that slightly in the process.
Now, we did post on the website, um, about the opening, and we did receive one inquiry of interest, uh, from the public. Uh, Mr. Miller is seated here. I assume that you're not interested in filling two years that you're, you were looking for, your four-year that you're running for?
I am, yes.
Okay.
So can we nominate people?
You can nominate people right now.
I'd like to nominate, you said, you resign first or not?
Well, I mean, I, you can wait to see, you know, who's nominated, but before there's a, a motion to approve, uh, a sitting board member, we would need to have that resignation tendered, so we'll see who's nominated.
I'd like to nominate David Poole.
Does I have to make a statement, a second? Can you nominate?
Uh, no, there's, there's no second should be required for a nomination. It would be a motion to close nominations, since we're doing a nomination, uh, process. So you can nominate...
Someone else.
Someone else.
I'll make a motion to nominate David Poole.
If there are no additional nominations, if, uh, was a motion to close the nominations?
Make a motion to close nominations.
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now that, in light of the fact that Mr. Rathgab isn't a nominated, uh, well, I guess we would have a, a vote to select, and then we'll do a separate, a separate motion to, so I guess you can do a roll call vote based on the two.
Can Mr. Poole here?
No.
Uh, for informational purposes, it is possible to appoint somebody who is not present. It would be contingent upon...
I can't accept the nomination.
It would have, well, no, it is, uh, it is possible to appoint someone who is not present. The appointment by operation of law would be subject to their subsequent appointments to serve, if that's the board's desire.
Okay, Mr. Ocasoneal, uh, please poll everyone asking for their choice between Mr. Poole and Mr. Rathgab.
Uh, Mr. Martino.
Mr. Poole.
Mr. Ocasoneal. Mr. Rathgab. Mr. Potts.
Mr. Rathgab.
Mr. Scotts.
Mr. Rathgab.
Ms. Tardowski.
Mr. Rathgab.
Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Rathgab.
There's another name.
Did you, yourself? Mr. Rathgab?
Uh, Mr. Rathgab, that's, uh, sure.
Yeah.
Ms. Rathgab?
Uh, Mr. Rathgab.
Okay. There being an expression of intent to appoint Mr. Rathgab, I would ask that Mr. Rathgab tender his resignation, as currently, you know, pursuant to his prior, um, uh, condition upon his appointment to fill the vacancy, um, for Mr. Kurtz.
Um, so that, as of today's date, would that...
As of today's date, effective immediately.
So, as of effective immediately, I would, I'll tender my resignation to pursue Mr. Kurtz's, uh, goal, contingent upon...
Okay, then I would ask that, um, motion, uh, then I would ask that motion fifteen B be amended to accept the resignation of Mr. Rathgab and, uh, from his current position and appoint him to the board's school directors, uh, effective tomorrow, to fulfill the remainder of Connor Kurtz's term, which ends November twenty-ninth.
Excuse me, Mr. Subers, just had him resign immediately, so if the appointment isn't effective until tomorrow, he won't be able to participate the rest of the night.
You know what? Let me, let me amend that, and accept Mr. Rathgab's resignation at the conclusion of this evening's, uh, meeting, um, and concurrently approve his appointment to fill the remainder of Connor Kurtz's term effective tomorrow.
So that would have us, uh, in his brain.
That, that would, that'd be vacant, and there would be a vacancy to be filled for that remain, the remainder of Mr. Rathgab's term, starting, uh, tomorrow also.
You'd have to wait till tomorrow to appoint that?
No, you could fill that, the vacancy would exist, because you would accept it pursuant to that motion, so there could be a subsequent motion to fill the vacancy for, uh, Mr. Rathgab's, uh, visit.
Somebody would nominate him?
Well, let's, let's...
Well, let's, let's Mr. Rathgab first.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, you're...
Very anxious.
One thing is...
Okay, um, for, for the amended motion of fifteen B, a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Rathgab, um, Mr. Ocasoneal, roll call please.
Ms. Martino.
Yes.
Mr. Ocasoneal, yes. Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Rathgab.
Yes.
Mr. Scotts.
Yes.
Ms. Tardowski.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay.
Okay, now, there's a vacancy.
Now, we have a vacancy for beginning tomorrow through, is it December first? Or second, we organize on the...
Yeah, the first Monday of December, um, will be, uh, prior to the commencement of that meeting, immediately prior to the commencement of that meeting.
So that's, that's the first.
Yeah. Now, since, Mr. Miller, would you be interested in serving for that roughly month and a half?
I'm, I am.
Can you come up here, please? Does any, anyone have any questions for Mr. Miller? Okay, um, what we'll do is, uh, we have to make a motion for Mr. Miller to fill the remaining time of Mr. Rathgab.
Effective tomorrow, effective October twenty-four, point seventeen.
Okay. All right. No board members have any questions? Thank you.
Oh, is there a motion?
Well, no, we're, I, I, just so, just so he doesn't have...
I'd also like to nominate David Poole.
So we have two, two nominations, one for Mr. Miller and one for Mr. Poole? Okay.
So, just to clear the record, there's a, a nomination for Mr. Miller and a nomination for Mr. Poole. Do we have a motion to close nominations?
Second.
Vote on the motion to close?
Mr. Ocasoneal.
Can we, um, vote on the motion to close, and then we'll have the vote. Motion to close nominations, I mean, yeah, vote on the motion to close.
All in favor of closing the motions, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now, moving on to the appointment of, of, uh, the director for the remaining time of Mr. Rathgab's, um, service. We have two individuals, Mr. Miller and Mr. Poole. Mr. Ocasoneal, please do a roll call, asking for the members for their choice.
Mr. Ocasoneal. Mr. Miller. Mr. Potts.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Rathgab.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Scotts.
Mr. Miller.
Ms. Tardowski.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Martino.
Mr. Poole.
Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Miller.
Just to close it out, to make sure there's no question, we have a motion to appoint Mr. Poole to, uh, to...
Mr. Mill...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller. To fill the remaining term of Mr. Rathgab through the commencement of the reorganization meeting on December one, uh, it's December fourth, December four, uh, twenty seventeen, effective October twenty-four, point seventeen.
So we'll, um, either Mr. Harris or myself will...
Okay. Second?
Second.
Vote? All in favor? Do you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
And before, um, undertaking their office, um, and the duties of their office, Mr., um, Miller and Mr. Rathgab should be administered the oath of office. There's a, we provide a certificate to be signed by the person who will be listening to that oath to be completed and kept on file with the district. So that can be this evening, or tomorrow.
Just do it tonight.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Haynes, do you?
I have everything.
You have that information?
Yep, I have everything I need.
Can you just administer the oath to Mr. Miller and to Mr. Rathgab?
Do it at the mic?
Yeah.
Aye.
Well, yes, tomorrow.
I don't remember.
Now, now, he picked up, I picked up. We just assigned him all the, all the district debt. He just signed for all the district debt.
Okay, I need you to read it out to me, and insert your name after I am receiving. Say aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowmely swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
O pay and defend.
O pay and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this country.
And the Constitution of this country.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
With the death.
Now, in signing, you've just assumed all the debt for the Skand, the Daniel Boone School District. Mr. Miller, we'll be out, or in touch with you, either Mr. Harris or myself, to make arrangements for your orientation to begin. Okay, so we'll, we'll be in contact. The last item under fifteen C as amended, do we have a motion to approve Ms. Spites as the chairperson for the curriculum instruction committee?
Remove.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rathgab, second by Mr. Potts. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. I added D, the district attendance spreadsheet. Obviously, over the last couple of years, Mr. Kurtz's attendance and participation by telephone have been quite the subject of interest in the public. I have been keeping a spreadsheet of everyone's participation, whether it be in person, on the phone, or have they been absent, to make sure we're staying within our policy. I would like to discontinue that, since Mr. Kurtz is no longer serving on the board. Any, any objections? Okay, so noted. Now, at this time, I would like to ask for any presentations by the public on any issue, please come forward.
Can I interject one thing?
Sorry, I'm.
If I'm not mistaken, our next meeting is the number thirteen election day, is the number seventh, and I just want to encourage everyone to vote.
Anyone from the public? Please approach the, the microphone, sign in there, and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight my comments.
Can I have your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. My name is John Pecoretta. I reside in Douglasville at four zero five North Max Creek Road.
Thank you.
And I'd like to speak briefly about our current baseball program. Our coaches always look for ways to improve the lives of our players as adults, students, and athletes. As athletes, these young adults have great opportunity to reach others. From building on the tradition with our local youth players, tutoring, tutoring each other in the classroom to achieve their best, or hosting an event with our buddy ball organization, this family, these players are special. We, as parents, mentors, teachers, and community leaders, need to always be cognizant of examples that we are setting for others, especially the players, not just those sitting here today, and many of them didn't come because they're actually studying, or those that may step on the field this year to proudly represent that DB on your path, but those players that come after these young adults as they move on. It all starts with culture. A school board is constantly taxed and facing important decisions. I ask you to reflect on what is the right choices as for the district and for our community. I implore you to speak up and stand behind what you feel is the right direction for this program and these families. Please do not sway your convictions based on hearsay, undocumented incidents, or misguided agendas. Vote based on evidence, supported by facts. Create a culture that sets standards to all coaches that they must adhere to. We know that holding a separate set of standards for one or two coaches is highly unethical. Specifically, there's a document which only a few coaches were required to sign. If they did not sign, they'd not be permitted to coach here at Daniel Boone. The warning in this document appears to mirror a non-compete hiring contract, and it stipulates exclusivity of employment to the Daniel Boone area school district. If violated, their employment with this district is terminated immediately. This is a document that not only unrealistic and is super incited, but it will also set a precedence and foundation for discrimination, restricts its upon one ability to generate livelihood for themselves. This document limits others in the district from legally performing extracurricular activities. Specifically, a document of this nature legally limits any teacher, aide, or coach performing developmental instructional, development, developmental instruction such as, but not limited to academic tutoring, instructional services, music lessons, or sports instruction. We should not attempt to limit teaching experiences or extracurricular development. This governing body has spent time debating controversies with little transparency. While I appreciate your service abilities, I recognize that it's time for transparency and clarification. This is indeed tiresome for all, and it needs to be resolved. We need to shift our focus toward progress. We are all aware, a few weeks ago, there was a four-four vote in approving Mr. Raina for the 2018 spring baseball season. It is my hope that John Raina's name will again appear as an assistant coaching nomination for the, in the coming months. Mr. Raina has demonstrated a true commitment to coaching. He deserves a chance to solidify his role on this baseball staff this year, ultimately wearing the Carolina blue and that same DB upon his head, allowing him to continue to foster the culture of this program, this community, and these young adults. I thank you for your time this evening, and I wish everybody a joyous holiday. All E.B.
Is there any other public comments?
Good evening, board members. My name is Jack Lacy. I'm a property owner, family township, forty-three years. I don't live in the township. I do have a family, a son.
Can you, can you just press that button until the light comes on there?
It is on.
No, the red light. It'll turn red when you press the button. There you go. Scott, Scott, can you reset the timer, please?
Did you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
As a property owner, but also as a father and a grandfather, I have my son here. We raised three children in this township and have gone to Daniel Boone. We have a grandson who also is presently on the Boone baseball team and football team. Unfortunately, football, he was injured, can't play again this year. I'm here to support, really, Mr. Raina. I come from a town in Brook Island, very similar to Daniel Boone. Sports was the, was the name of the game. In the wintertime, ice hockey was the sport. We didn't even have a gym buzzer. That's been years ago. We had coaches who were dedicated, dedicated to the sport and also to build men and women for the future. I've seen Mr. Raina coach in some of the tutelage of Mr. Jason. My gosh, this gentleman has a lot to offer this district, and also sports based on the township. I don't know about you folks, I'm tired hearing and seeing everything, Wilson, Mifflin. I made a call here a couple of weeks ago to the sports fellow, and I said, let me ask you something. There are school of valley, you've got Boone, you've got all these other teams that are playing sports. Why are you constantly putting in Wilson, Mifflin, and Erks Catherine, who, as we probably all know, they didn't recruit? You can't do it at Daniel Boone or any other schools. The answer I got from that young man was, they're the best. My gosh, that's not right. That is not right. Anyway, that's my opinion. I would like the board to consider, briefly, Mr. Raina, I understand it was a, a meeting some time ago, you had a four, a full vote. I don't know what the, why you didn't put in, but a full vote, so I, but I think if you don't choose Mr. Raina, you really lose enough. I thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
Sir?
We're adjourned.